Of October 6th, I had made a couple of minor corrections. Does anyone else have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes as correct?
This is Rob Barron, so moved.
Daniel Finger, second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Okay, James Arnt. Robert Barron.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Daniel Finger also mentioned. Jimena Franchella.
Yes.
Here.
Okay, you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Hugh Grecian.
Yes, I was, I wasn't at that last meeting, and I think Gail's on the phone.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. I'll approve.
Okay. Richard Hyman, Bernie Toombs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Holly Hasbrook, yes.
Okay, thank you, Holly.
Anyone else who has not voted? Okay, thank you. Chairman's remarks. I'm going to make a suggestion that we change one of the meeting dates for next year. That the meeting in November not be the day after Election Day, but be the Thursday after Election Day instead of the Wednesday after Election Day. Given that, I'm sure some of us were up pretty late last night and most likely will happen next year. So I would like to suggest next year's November meeting be the first Thursday, not the, not the first Wednesday.
I think that's a great idea. This is Holly.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. Second, please.
I, I would second, but I'm half asleep, so it's hard for me to do it.
All the mornings.
Hey, Mike, Michael.
Before you actually take the vote on this, let me just ask a question. Would you prefer to have it as the second Tuesday instead?
I like that.
Prefer the second Tuesday rather than the third?
Rather than a Thursday.
Yeah, I prefer the second Tuesday.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, can we revise the motions then? Holly, will you revise the motion?
Uh, yes, revised.
And Rob, will you revise your second?
I will second, yes.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Uh, James Arnt. Robert Barron.
Yes.
Dwight Douglas. Daniel Finger.
Yes.
Jimena Franchella.
Yes.
Hugh Grecian.
Yes.
Um, Richard Hyman.
Yes.
Vincent Kupicki. Kathleen O'Connor. Bernie Toombs.
Yes.
Rini Tobek.
Okay, James, you're unmuted. You vote on the minutes? Now, now you're muted again.
I'm trying to figure this out. Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you, James. Okay, do we have? It's been approved, okay. Commissioner's remarks.
So, good morning, everyone. Um, there are just two things I wanted to mention to you today. There are a lot of training opportunities that Michael has been sending notices to everybody about. Um, I do want to remind you that as planning board members, you do have an obligation to get four hours of training every year. Um, and when you do get that training, if you can send your certificates into Michael or to Bill, just so that we can keep a record of it. Um, it's just important for us to make sure that each of our members complies with that training requirement. And then the second is there's no census presentation after many, many months of seeing them. So I just wanted to give you a quick closeout on Census 2020. Um, after a court battle that went all the way to the United States Supreme Court, uh, and the government won. So the, you know, in essence, the, the government had the ability to shut down the census in, in, in essence, early. Um, and they did close it out midnight Hawaii time on October 16th, which, October 15th, sorry, which ended up being six o'clock in the morning on October 16th here in New York. So in all, the census portal was open a total of 213 days, which is about 73 days longer than normal. Um, but obviously because of the pandemic, it was important that we have as much time. And, and every municipality that benefited from those last couple of days appreciated having that extra time. Um, in, in all, the county did really, really well. Uh, we finished with a self-response rate of 69.3%. That was 1.4% higher than we had done in 2010. That's the county rate. Um, but 79% of our municipalities, so 34 of the 43 municipalities also exceeded their 2010 response rate. It was really only nine municipalities that did not get to the 2010 response rate. Um, but even like Portchester, who, who ended up at the, at the bottom, unfortunately, um, even there, they ended about 4.3% lower than they had done in 2010. But when we did the analysis, they ended up counting 800 households or approximately 800 households more than they had done in 2010 because we had done so much prep work ahead of time that we found many, many more housing units than we had found in 2010. Or actually, because the planning department really didn't have much involvement in the 2010 census. Um, we, the, it was really relied upon the Census Bureau's own data. Um, so with the Portchester, 62.6% of about 10,000 households ended up being, in 2010, ended up being a lower response rate than their 57.2% of 12,000 households in 2020. Um, so like we said, even Portchester ended up with an extra 800 housing units that were self-reported. And it's always better to do the, get the self-response rates because then that household that lives there is telling everybody how many people are actually there. Um, what we don't know is when the Census Bureau doesn't get a response, how many people they actually count living in that housing unit. Um, so we can close the books on Census 2020. We do have another complete count committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. Um, with the intention at this point of just putting together a record of what we did, what are all of our efforts were, what worked best, what, you know, what didn't work so that, um, you know, 10 years from now or eight years from now, when we actually start the 2030 process, we'll have a much better sense of, um, you know, what to consider, what worked, what didn't work here in Westchester. So, um, that, Richard, that's it for me.
Norman, why don't you just explain the education requirements for the planning board members?
Um, so, so like I said, you have a requirement to get four hours of training. Um, there are many opportunities to be able to get training. The Westchester Municipal Planning Federation is certainly one of those. Um, and, you know, many of you I know go to their spring insti-, you know, the Land Use Training Institute. Uh, they are hosting a couple of training opportunities this fall. There was one this past Friday, uh, with, with, was joint with the Westchester County Association on Affordable Housing. They are doing a planning board seminar or workshop itself, so you can get some hours from doing that. Um, if you want to know what the zoning board does, you can do, you know, a training on the zoning board. But there's all, there's all sorts of opportunities that you can, um, benefit from. Even organizations like Pattern for Progress and other planning organizations do host trainings as well. So, um, but I just want, you know, it was important to make sure that you get your certificates into us so that we do have a record that you completed your training.
Uh, Norma.
Four hours per year.
Yes, four hours per year, correct. And you are allowed to actually do two years worth, so you could actually do eight hours in one year, and then it would cover you for the next year.
Okay, so, Norma, if we, due to COVID this year, when, in such a long period in which we didn't have the ability to have it, that there's no, uh, uh, stipulation that we are let, you know, it, we still have to do the four, four hours this year.
You still have to do the four hours, and there are really lots of, lots of video, you know, and online opportunities, Bernie. So there's, you know, there's lots of opportunity to get caught up with those four hours.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda are referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the county planning board, September 16th, 2020 to October 15th, 2020. Does anyone have any comments?
Uh, yes, this is Holly. I have to recuse myself from the 25 South Riverside Avenue and the Broad, Broad Street Owner LLC Portchester Project.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Any other, any other comments?
Yeah, Richard, I have a question about the, um, the Country Club Battery Storage in Greenberg. What exactly is that?
Who's gonna handle that?
Um, so that, this is Lucas, that's, um, that's a utility, um, application where, um, they're gonna, uh, add like these, like these battery, like these battery storage areas that will like, I guess they'll be charged during periods of like, uh, when, when the, like overnight, when there's excess power and they get.
Right, exactly. You know, I understand all that, but what is the, what are the safeguards that they're putting in for this battery-packed building to be out there? Again, it's a, it's a low piece of property over there that gets a lot of water, if you want to call it that. And do they have like a backup in case the batteries leak or if there's anything that could go wrong with the actual facility?
Okay, so that's not really given to us with the, um, with the referral application, like the, the actual mechanics of how these things work. Right, I'm gonna tell you something, you should expect to see more of these. This kind of stuff, battery storage, um, and, uh, solar panel applications have been coming in like gangbusters.
Really?
Simply because, well, yeah, because we're closing Indian Point, um, you know, and there's gonna need to be a makeup of the energy and things like solar power and wind power, you don't get to turn it on and off like you would, like, you know, with a coal plant where you shovel in more coal and it makes more power. In this case, you know, the power's only made when the sun is out and you have to store it. So, so we, you'll see in your next month's referral report, there's gonna be another one that was up in, um, Yorkton Heights. So, so you're gonna see these pop up all over the place on these little like scrap parcels, these little remnant parcels that have been undeveloped for, you know, been, always been undeveloped. You're gonna start.
Right, exactly.
Right.
All right, all right, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see how it progresses, but I just have to say that, you know, for future needs, I think we should put something out there about the, you know, the overfill or overflow or if something goes wrong with the facilities, it's gonna contaminate the soil and go back into the ground and be like, you know, like the, the Hudson River back in the day.
You know, it, it might be beneficial to have, to, to, to talk with someone from that industry about it because this is, this is like a brand new thing that we've never seen before. And they're gonna start coming at us, you know, a lot, would be my guy.
Lucas, why don't you see if you can get some more information?
Yeah, just in general, the battery.
And then send it to the planning board members for, uh, now this also involves putting a conduit under Nolan Road. So it's not just, uh, onsite, it also impacts where the conduit is going.
Right. Could somebody?
Want to get a drawing?
Could somebody like turn off there, there's a background mic noise, thanks.
Hey, Hugh, were you gonna say something?
I was.
Yeah, just quick, the, the battery technology to make you feel better is not lead acid. There's not a lot of leakage. There's other battery technologies out there now. But, uh, you know, again, you know, we are looking at that for county facilities too, for leveling, also for rate leveling too. They, it works in, you know, where you, during the day, you, um, with our solar panel projects, we do store and then at night, um, you know, use it. And during the day, we have peak times where we want to switch to battery use in the future too. And that's more of, that's for, for the grid, not to, you know, put stress on the entire grid. But, yeah, that battery technology's changing all the time and not to be an expert, but it, it's a, it's a lot safer than it used to be.
Is it possible for us to get a drawing or something, a picture of what these things look like?
Uh, sure, we have some examples of that. Uh, I imagine we can, I'll have Gail follow up on that for you. We, we do have some, you know, preliminary drawings on some installations, but yes, sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, hi, this is Rob. Um, regarding the MTP 20002, the North 60, I had made some comments regarding the sort of over-provision of parking spaces and the sort of insufficient nature of the bike facilities that they were proposing. Did those make it into the, the referral letter?
Uh, we tried to put in as much as we could. Um, the thing is, is as you can see, we're limited by the space on this page. So, um, we really had to like summarize as, uh, you know, down to as little as we could to get it to fit on the page of the report. Um, so I'd have to go back and look at the letter, um, but I mean, pretty much every, every comment that you emailed to me, I, I put in the letter. And I remember cutting them off and I inserted them, so.
Okay, as long as, as long as it went to, as long as it went to them, and, and that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes with these big letters, the summaries are tricky to summarize.
That's what I figured. Thank you, thank you, Lucas.
Why don't you, Lucas, why don't you send Rob the, the actual letter?
Oh, yeah, that I can do.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, then we have a motion to approve the referrals subject to the comments and the refusals.
This is Rob, so moved.
I have a second.
Jimena, second.
Thank you. Call the roll. Michael?
Yes, James Arnt.
Yes.
Robert Barron.
Yes.
Dwight Douglas. Daniel Finger.
Yes. Yes.
Jimena Franchella.
Yes.
Commissioner Grecian.
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook. Richard Hyman.
Yes.
Vincent Kupicki. Nat Hyman. Nat Federici, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Kathleen O'Connor.
Yes.
And Bernie Toombs.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna to ask, um, if the representatives from Con Edison, if they're here, if they would like me to move them up on the meeting so they could get out sooner or they could wait. So I guess, uh, Jane Solnik, would you like to, um, be moved up on the agenda? Okay, never mind. Referral of interest, Chappaqua Hamlet Form-Based Code. Which in case some of you hadn't seen, was an interesting article in the local newspaper last week. Okay, who's handling that?
Okay, uh, I am, if you just give me a second to get it up on the screen. Okay. Um, Michael, I, I'm, am I sharing my screen?
Can you? Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
No, I, I'm clicking on my screen, uh, share my screen, but it's not highlighted, it's not letting me do it for some reason.
Oh, one second, I gotta just make you the presenter.
Lucas, do you have to keep your radio on behind you?
It might be my son's online school. Um, let me tell him to move to another room. Henry, you must move to another room. You must now. Take it out. Sorry. Okay.
Okay, Lucas, you're now the presenter.
Okay, uh, and share my screen. Is the presentation viewable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, let me just bring up the big screen here. Okay, okay, so, um, this is another, uh, one of these, um, uh, form-based ordinances that we've been, that has been referred to us over the last, um, couple of months. Uh, this has been, you know, as you know, a trend where a number of municipalities are beginning to implement these form-based codes. And this is the latest one, and this is from the town of Newcastle. And it's a Chappaqua Hamlet Form-Based District that would be just for the downtown portion of the Chappaqua Hamlet. And with this application, um, has come a draft environmental impact statement that reviews the impacts of the zoning amendment. We, we reviewed an earlier, um, referral back in February for the scoping document for this environmental impact statement. But with the EIS, that's where they included the actual draft text of the ordinance. So we got to review that as well. Uh, just a quick overview of where the Chappaqua Hamlet is, in case, you know, you're not familiar with it. It's, um, basically in the central part of northern Westchester. Um, you can see here that, um, let me turn the pointer on. Where's the pointer? Oh, pointer, okay. Um, it's a, this, it's basically along, um, the Sawmill Parkway is kind of the main, um, roadway that goes through the center of the hamlet. Um, the Metro North Harlem Line also goes directly through the center of the hamlet. And you can see here, this is like a, like a, a closeup. You can see the Sawmill Parkway is kind of the main thing that goes through along with the, the, uh, Metro North Harlem Line. The two major roads that go through, this is Route 120, this is Quaker Street on the west side of the Parkway. And then it becomes King Street on the east side, and then it heads down towards Armoc and the county airport. Um, the other part of, the other main road here is, this is Bedford Road, Route 117. This runs in between, uh, Mount Kisco and Pleasantville. Also, just so you know, um, the Chappaqua Hamlet has two county roads, Washington Avenue and South Greeley Avenue are county roads. And the county runs, um, D-line Bus Route Number 19, which goes through the center of Chappaqua, um, in between Mount Kisco and Offening. Uh, this is an aerial of what the, uh, hamlet looks like. As you can see, a lot of the Chappaqua Hamlet is surface parking. So this is, um, one of the largest, um, parking areas for the Metro North system is here in Chappaqua. So you have these very large surface parking lots. Over the years, there's been a number of considerations for how these lots could be developed. Uh, the Form-Based District includes a, a vision for that, which we'll get to in a little bit. Uh, recently, the Chappaqua Hamlet, um, went, underwent a $15 million upgrade. Uh, this was just something that needed to occur kind of anyway, um, because a lot of the infrastructure in the hamlet was, um, dilapidated. It was, they were having some issues with it. So the town has already gone through and replaced the sanitary sewer lines, the water lines. Um, a lot of the stormwater infrastructure was replaced. There's new sidewalks that are consistent in, in look and style throughout the, um, the downtown area, new street trees, street lights, all that stuff. And you can see, this is the most recent picture from Google Street View that, uh, if you go online right now, you'll, you'll see this. This is a few months back. This is them, um, doing the work. Also, an interesting thing about the Chappaqua Hamlet is, is that it's right in the Sawmill County Sewer District. So, uh, even though there's a lot of undeveloped areas in the hamlet, um, the whole hamlet is sewed. So it actually does have a lot of infrastructure that could accommodate growth. In 2017, the town, uh, adopted a comprehensive plan update. Um, this comprehensive plan, uh, laid the groundwork for this, um, uh, Form-Based Zoning. It was specifically discussed in the comprehensive plan, uh, and it was noted it was a priority initiative. So this is basically the town implementing the plan that they adopted, uh, three years back. So currently, we have a draft generic environmental impact statement that was accepted, uh, in September. Uh, it can, like I said, it contained the new Form-Based Code, which we'll get into in a second. Uh, the town held a public hearing on October 27th, and they decided to adjourn it, um, to November 10th. So that means that we have until at least November 20th to submit a comment letter, um, perhaps longer. But, um, we were thinking that we could circulate a letter to you in the next few days, and we would be no problem to meet that deadline. So the proposed new zoning, um, basically it creates a new article, Article 8, which is the Form-Based District. And that includes, um, a, a regulating plan, which dictates the uses, the, the dimensions of the proposed, um, of the buildings that could be constructed. Uh, there's also, um, standards for street and thoroughfares for any new streets or new roadways that are created as part of a development. Uh, there's also, um, quite extensive architectural standards, there's green building standards, there's open space requirements, among other requirements, and, uh, everything is organized by sub-district. So basically, the Form-Based District is one large district, and they have it, um, separated into a number of sub-districts. So the sub-districts for the, um, for the hamlet basically place the highest density near the train station with, um, less dense and lower height buildings, um, kind of on the outskirts along like, um, so, so the highest density is right here, right near the train station, and at the main intersection between King Street and Greeley Avenue. When you go a little further out, um, so, so these districts include retail. Hamlet Urban Center, um, would all have, the F5 district would all have retail. Uh, the F5 minus would not have retail. So this is also high density near the train station, but this is kind of where the parking lots currently are. So they're saying there would not be retail here, but there could be high-density development here. Uh, the lower-density district is the F4, the Hamlet General Urban, both with and without retail. You can see this is as you get further away, um, along King Street, for example. Um, when you get up to, when you go up, King Street goes up a hill, and then it gets to, um, Route 117, Bedford Road, right here. And this is called the Upper Hamlet. There's another area that's not contiguous to the, the main hamlet. Um, right now, there's a shopping center here, there's a number of, um, you know, small retail stores. And so this would also be included in the Form-Based District, um, under the F4, uh, sub-district. So retail would continue to be allowed, but it would be a, a little bit lower density. Um, the, the, so the Form-Based District actually has these nine different districts. Um, the only four that are being considered right now are the four that I just mentioned to you before on the map, the F4 and F5, both with and without retail. But the Form-Based District includes, um, five other districts that they have set up in reserve in case at some point in the future, um, the town were to expand the Form-Based Regulations. They already have the districts in place to do that elsewhere in the town. Um, and you can see here, this is the use table that, um, uh, would be for the whole Form-Based District. And you can see that only the F4 and F5 districts have permitted and special permit uses listed. The others are just held in reserve. So you can see here that generally, um, you know, multifamily, uh, uses are permitted in these districts, whereas one family actually is not in the highest, uh, in the highest, uh, density district. Um, so townhouses, multifamily buildings are generally permitted. Two-family buildings are also permitted in the lower-density district, uh, mixed use and civic facilities. But then other, you know, other, uh, you know, agriculture, industrial, those are not permitted. So let's take a look at the regulating plan. Um, so this is how the code would work in action on a block-by-block basis. So this is, um, kind of looks very different than what we're accustomed to with a, a standard zoning ordinance. So you can see here that, um, this is right where, uh, the Route 120 or Quaker Road comes over a bridge over the, um, Metro North tracks, and it intersects with South Greeley Avenue. So, for, for example, in this particular block, this is zoned, um, F, uh, F5. And then you can look at these different numbers, and it'll tell you what you can do. So this says two to five, so that's the maximum building height. So you can construct it between two- and five-story building on this, on this property. These numbers here represent, um, what they call frontage occupancy. So 70 to 100%, this means that your building must, uh, occupy between 70 and 100% of the lot frontage with the street. So that's a pretty high number for this, um, uh, particular property. This number here with the yellow arrows is 50 to 80%. This is how much, uh, frontage your upper stories have to. This is how much, uh, frontage your upper stories have to occupy. So you can, you can tier them back a little bit, um, you know, that it could just be one story along the street, with the second story only occupying some of the building, and that would be fine. Um, in addition to this, uh, this red band right here, or orange band, this means that retail is required along this particular section of frontage. So you'll see that it ends right here. This is because Quaker Road ramps up into a bridge. So they say, okay, you have to start the retail right here where the, kind of, road meets ground level here. Um, in addition, these numbers here, PH20, uh, that is a, um, frontage type. So it basically gives you, uh, regulations for how the streetscape is supposed to be, um, uh, set up. Uh, so there's four different frontage types, I'm sorry, five different frontage types that could be, um, included here. And then, um, there's also required open space. So these are, um, areas here, like the circle in front of the train station, for example. These are required by the ordinance to be left as open space. Uh, finally, there's, um, a couple of other things. There's, there's thoroughfare type, we'll get to the thoroughfare regulations later. They, um, each road will have like a number on it that says, okay, it has to be a certain thoroughfare type. There are also regulations for architectural features. Uh, you'll see these green, I'm, I'm sorry, these blue squares that are here on the corner. These, um, dictate that you have to have a corner architectural feature as part of your building, or you might have to have an inline architectural feature, like right here. This is an architectural feature that's intended to be viewable, um, when you're coming down Quaker Road, for example. They want an architectural feature that's right in front of you as you come down the road. Uh, just a quick look at how the regulating plan plays out in other, uh, parts of the hamlet. This is, um, currently the site of a large parking lot. So this, in this case, they're saying it would be that same higher-density district, but without the retail. There is a corner architectural feature, uh, that's prescribed for Washington Avenue here. This is required open space that has to be left, uh, left open. I believe this, um, here has to do with the Sawmill River, which runs adjacent to the track, so that needs to be left undisturbed. Uh, you can have up to a two- or three-story building here, a two- or a five-story building here. You have to have between 50 and 95% of your building, your building occupying the frontage. Um, there's no requirement for second stories in this location. Again, the streetscape is, uh, shown to be verge with dooryard. They give you a, um, diagram of that later in the code. Uh, this is a quick look at the upper hamlet. Again, it's the same thing, um, two-to-four-story buildings. In these locations, the architectural features are required. The streetscape here is, uh, prescribed as a 16-foot wide, um, the streetscape with tree pits. So it's, it's very, i- it's all laid out basically visually like this on the different pages of the regulating plan. The regulating plan also has, um, a number of, um, you know, diagrams that show you how each of those, uh, aspects that I just described to you needs to be constructed. So you'll see here that they have, um, this is the regulations for frontage occupancy. They have sign regulations that are very clear. Um, these are regulations for how, like, this is the, uh, tree pit and hardscape 16. So the, where this is where the 16-foot, foot-wide sidewalk is, this is a diagram of how it would need to look. Um, th- this is where the parking would need to be located. And finally, these are the thorough, uh, the thoroughfare regulations. You'll see here that this dictates that you need to have, um, two 11-foot wide travel lanes, two eight-foot wide parking lanes. So it's a 38-foot curb-to-curb measurement with the 11-foot wide sidewalks and tree pits, et cetera. But one thing I'd like to point out to you while we're looking at this is that, interestingly, this is not a complete street. It, um, it's cars and sidewalks, but it does not include, um, bicycle, uh, lanes or anything like that. Uh, so, for example, y- you know, if, if the town had a complete street policy, which they don't, um, it would, it would, it would not comply with that. Although the county does have a complete street policy for the two county roads that go through the, the hamlet. Uh, for architectural regulations, um, there's a, a very extensive section about this in the ordinance. Uh, there's regulations for facades, entries, windows, wall materials. Um, there's also a regulation of architectural styles. So you'll see here in this, uh, table that there are certain architectural styles that are permitted in certain, um, districts, and some that are not. Like, i- in this case, most of them are permitted, but like, for example, Art Deco is only permitted in the F5 district, and only if, it only encompasses 20% of a block face, so they don't want as much Art Deco, um, as they want the other, um, styles of architectural construction. Um, this is the Art Deco stuff. They have, uh, just drawings about what the, what they expect the buildings to look like, um, you know, applying their standards. For parking regulations, uh, they use a, basically a parking table that, uh, prescribes parking ratios for the different, um, uses throughout the ordinance. However, they also have a parking toolbox that will allow applicants to leverage excess parking through agreements with neighboring property owners. So they're giving, um, while they don't offer credits like other parking credits that other form-based codes that we've reviewed have had, they offer a number of opportunities to allow applicants to work with neighbors to reduce the parking that's required. Um, they also have parking incentives for existing property owners. So if you, uh, currently own a building and you want to make changes to it, um, under this new code, they give you a little bit of a break with the parking. So, for example, if you, uh, want to construct a building, or you, you know, you own an existing site, you want to renovate or construct a new building that has up to 3,000 square feet of commercial space, you are allowed to use the existing parking on your site to accommodate the parking. There won't be any new requirements. The same goes for a residential building of up to four units. If you're the current property owner, you're, uh, or you want to renovate a building and, and create four apartments, you can just use the existing parking on the site. You don't have to create more. And the same goes for the conversion of an existing commercial space to residential. So it's estimated that approximately 100 existing properties are located in the hamlet that could avail themselves of these incentives. Um, in addition, an applicant can apply for a 25% reduction in parking if they can demonstrate that there's already an existing comparable, um, comparable use within the hamlet that requires less parking. So, you know, somebody's opening a particular type of store, they say, oh, well, that store on the other side of the hamlet, and they don't, they have 10 spaces and it, it's never full. Can you give us a reduction, um, in parking? And that could be granted up to 25%. In addition, um, the code allows for a lot of flexibility to provide parking off-site. So in this case, um, you could have parking that's within a 13, um, 1,320 feet, it's like a quarter mile. Um, so, and you can have it off-site as long as there is a, like, a walking path or way to walk from the parking to the use. You can also have parking located up to a mile away if you provide valet or shuttle service for your use. Um, in addition, on-street parking can be used for the required parking, perhaps in situations where a new thoroughfare or street is created as part of an application. You might be able to specify that certain on-street spaces can be, on those new roads could be used for the development. Um, the ordinance also, um, provides an opportunity for a fee and lieu to be paid, uh, for parking. The regulations require, uh, one electric vehicle station per 50 parking spaces, and it also requires, um, bicycle parking to be, to be provided. The bicycle parking is at different ratios, um, depending on the use. Um, and also parking can be, and also gives a lot of latitude for parking. It can be provided as surface parking, structured parking, stacker parking, hydraulic parking, robotic parking. Um, a lot of these things that we've seen in other places where they use parking stackers or mechanical parking, that would now be permitted in the, uh, Chappaqua hamlet. Oh, no, it's not forwarding. In terms of affordable housing, uh, the, um, form-based district regulations do discuss affordable housing. The town adopted the model ordinance provisions back in 2011. Um, the form-based district basically mirrors those requirements with one exception, and that is, there are no density bonus, uh, provisions within the downtown Chappaqua hamlet for applicants that want to do above what is required. So it's still a 10% requirement for affordable AFFH units, but they wouldn't get a bonus if they wanted to do more than 10%. Um, in terms of other regulations, the, the, uh, form-based district, um, touches on, um, you know, there, there, there cannot be cul-de-sacs in, as part of any, uh, development. Also, um, in terms of collecting, um, you know, doing recreational facilities, the town has stated that they would rather collect, um, uh, like, a fee, a recreation fee from applicants, rather than have the applicants construct onsite, uh, recreational facilities for the residents of a proposed development. They'd rather the money come in so that the town could construct facilities for, for everyone to use. Um, and another interesting thing about this ordinance is that they're going to have a GEIS reimbursement fee. So this goes along the line of thinking that any applicant that comes in, uh, for a development proposal will now get to, um, their, their proposal will be a Type 2 action under SEACER. No one will have to go through, um, an environmental impact statement or any extensive SEACER review so long as their proposal fits within the build-out that the EIS, um, evaluates. So the idea is that the town spent a, a lot of money to do this EIS, that they want to recoup some of those costs from applicants, since they're going to get a much easier, uh, review as a Type 2 action. And so that fee will be fixed by the town board, um, later on. Uh, so now let's get into the application process. As part of this, uh, form-based district, the, um, town is proposing a very different application process that will go much more quickly than, um, it has in the past. And it will go much more quickly relative to what other municipalities offer. So in this case, the Newcastle Development Department will have the primary responsibility for the administration of this form-based code. And that means that if an applicant comes in with, uh, a proposal that the Development Department deems to be a by-right use, they would not need any site plan approval from the Newcastle Planning Board. They would only need approvals from, um, these boards, like either the, the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals, if variances or special permits are required. Um, in that case, then the Development Department would refer it to those boards. But if there's no special permit or variance, there's going to be no site plan approval that's required. So, um, it's basically a three-step process that an applicant would go through. The first is concept review, and concept review establishes conceptual conformance with the requirement. The town staff review the development to see if it's allowed by right or if it's prohibited. The concept review would also determine if a special permit or variance is required. After that, it would enter schematic review. So this is where the, the, the Development Department staff evaluates the design of a proposal using the regulation plan that I showed you before. The town staff may provide recommendations, and the applicant may seek deviations, encroachments, or waivers that are permitted in the ordinance. So that would be some of those parking credits that I discussed before, or things like that. Approval for these adjustments are given by the building inspector, um, after the Development Department staff review. Neighboring property owners are also, um, brought in at this stage, um, to, uh, review the plans. The design and development review is the final stage of the review, after all the changes to the project have been made during the schematic review. So it's kind of like the final version review. Uh, for smaller projects that are less than 7,000 square feet of building area, the applicant can, can combine all three stages of this review. But the interesting thing about this new review mechanism is that, mm, just for your information, none of these developments would be referred to the County Planning Board in the future. Because if the town, um, if the town planning board is not involved with giving a site plan approval for a development, there's no referral mechanism to refer, uh, the application to the County Planning Board. So you can see here that, um, this is a map of all the site plan referral jurisdictional triggers that, um, are located in, um, the hamlet. So you've got Quaker Road and Bedford Road are state roads, and Greeley Avenue and Washington Avenue are county roads. And you've got this municipal boundary that is at the south end of the hamlet. So if a site plan review is required by the, um, Town Planning Board, anything within 500 feet of any of these would be sent to the County Planning Board under the referral jurisdiction. But if you take out that site plan review requirement, um, no- nothing will be referred to the County Planning Board in this area. Um, moving on to the generic environmental impact statement, um,
Lucas, good, Lucas, could you move it along? It's, it's getting there.
Yeah, we're almost done. Yeah, we're almost done. But basically, the EIS, um, looks at a build-out scenario, and there would be a net increase of about 997 residential units, um, an increase in commercial space, and an increase in open space just because of the requirement. And as I explained to you before, the EIS covers the future review, um, for developments. Everything would basically be a Type 2 action. Uh, and then there would be a change in building height. Uh, this would basically be, uh, the visual impact of the proposed zoning. This is looking from the air, looking south. So you can see this is the, um, uh, this is the affordable housing building, um, that's next to the Sawmill Parkway that's currently being constructed. And this is, uh, Greeley Avenue here. You can see that the, the buildings would be larger. And then the next steps, um, I said this to you before, but the public hearing has been adjourned to November 10th. We have, at the minimum, until November 20th, to send back a letter. And we can circulate that letter to you after your discussion, uh, at the meeting right now. And that's, that's the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Hey, Richard, the only thing is, James, aren't, the, the, the only thing I see is that, is parking and parking and parking. And it's Chappaqua, it's a hamlet. I, I, I can't understand all the give-backs for parking, and where, where residents go to park, where the people go to park for the retail stores. That is the only thing I could bring back to this table right now, is that parking is an issue up there.
Any other comments?
Um, I, I, I would like to add, though, that with the parking credits, this is, probably has, um, some of the least amount of parking credits of the other form-based codes that we've looked at. Like, uh, like, for example, in Portchester, you could build a building with no parking, like, using, utilizing all the credits. Like, you will absolutely have to construct parking, um, in the, uh, in the Chappaqua hamlet using this code. It's just that you will have more flexibility to provide less. But when I asked the question, like, is it possible for somebody to build a building with no parking? I was told, yeah, not really. Uh, they're still going to have to construct some parking as part of any application.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have just one. I think you should put in the letter that, uh, they should put into the form-based code that there is a requirement to notify the County Planning Board. Uh, that kind, that kind of circumvention of the County Planning Board, uh, if, even if it's legal, is, uh, is not in keeping with, uh, county planning. And I think they should not allow, uh, I mean, I don't know if they're aware of it, or if they are, but I think we should let them know that they should still require referrals to the County Planning Board.
So, so let me just make sure I understand. You want, you want them to do a full referral as if it was still under the County Planning Board's jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay.
Richard, this is, this is Rob. I'm just, I, if, if we, can't we approve the, you know, the generic, the GIS? And that would be our, our approval? Why, why ask, why ask them every development to come back to us if we, if we could approve the GIS right front?
Um, each individual project, as it's developed, is going to have its own individual impact. And while it may be a Type 2 action for SEACER, you know, where the driveway is going, or its relationship to adjoining properties, or all those individual details, um, you know, are specific to each individual development. And while we don't have to, we're not going to talk about how many schoolchildren or traffic generation or those things that the GIS went over, I think there are site-specific issues for each development that, uh, are important, particularly since these are county roads and state roads. I don't think DOT, State DOT is going to give up its, uh, uh, jurisdiction if it involves, uh, curb cuts or traffic signalization or anything like that. They're still going to keep their hand in.
Okay.
Anyway, so send, send, send it around, um, so that we all can look at it before you're going to send it out.
No problem. I already have most, I already have it mostly drafted anyhow with staff comments. That you'll, you'll see, there's a bunch of staff comments we put in about, like, technical stuff.
Okay. Yeah, send it to us early enough so we can review it, and, uh, you can still meet the November 20th deadline. the November 20th deadline. Any other comments on this? Okay, thank you, Lucas. I'm going to ask again if Jane Solnick would like to be moved up on the agenda to, so that they can.
She may be having some problem with her, with her ability to speak. Michael, is there a way that they can get on? Or Jane, can you try?
I just unmuted her.
Jane, can you hear us?
Okay, how about the other gentleman that had a.
Mr. Ramos, can you hear us?
Because we heard him before the meeting started.
Yeah, we did hear him.
And he is, he is unmuted.
Hi, just let me take this minute to say I'm here. I was late. This is Reenie.
Thank you, Reenie.
Okay, so Jane, Mr. Ramos, you can't hear us, or you can't, you're not, you don't even have, yeah, there's no symbol under the, under the name at all.
All right. I tried making Mr. Ramos the presenter.
Jane, can you hear us, Jane?
She's muted.
We can't hear you. We can't hear you. No, we can't hear you. Okay, let's get back to the agenda, and we'll see.
Jane is now unmuted.
All right, Jane, yeah, Jane, you're now unmuted.
Jane, try again. Nope, no luck. Okay, let's get back, let's get back to the agenda. Let's see if you can figure this out, Michael. Okay, next is draft supplemental planning board report on the 2021 capital projects request. Who is handling that?
Hello, can you hear me?
That might be Bill who just stepped away from his computer.
Yeah. So, sorry, we're having problems on our end as well. So you can hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Sorry about that. So, good morning. We're following up with the amendments to the Capitol Planning Board's report on the 2021 capital projects. Back in July, you approved your planning board report on 2021 projects. We came back in August for four new projects that were aided by the Capital Projects Committee. In October, the county executive submitted his capital budget to the Board of Legislators, which included two new projects that we're bringing to you today. After you review and make your comments, the Board of Legislators will be adopting the, reviewing and adopting the capital budget in December, and they may add more projects. They usually do. And you'll be reviewing those additional projects added by the Board of Legislators in January or February. So the two new projects, the first one is BPF 40, McCallion Office Building Parking Garage Rehab. 1.7 is requested in 2021. That's for design, and I believe Commissioner Grecian and his staff are on the call as well, so I'm going to hand it over to them to kind of talk through the project.
Good morning. It's Robert Abmont from Public Works. Yes, this project provides phased rehabilitation of the McCallion Office Building Parking Garage. It will address the concrete columns, beams, ramps, and decks. Expansion joints on both sides of Martin Luther King Boulevard will be replaced, as you know, the parking garage goes under Martin Luther King Boulevard, so the road is actually almost like a bridge. We have to replace the adjoining expansion joints. We are also addressing the replacement of the existing fire alarm systems, ventilation systems, and carbon monoxide detection systems in the structure. We'll be rehabilitating the electrical vault that is located on levels B2 and B3. In all the affected areas of work, we will be replacing the existing lining over to LED and addressing any deteriorated plumbing or drainage piping that is in the structure. We had done an extensive evaluation of the building under a prior capital project, addressed those areas of immediate concern. We actually are under construction right now, taking care of some of those conditions. The previous project did then try to develop a one, two-to-three-year and five-year plan to address the structure, which was built in 1970, so it's approaching, you know, is 50 years old. And there is potential for a second phase later on in the outer capital years.
Will you have to close the garage during construction of this project, $24 million project?
No, we will do it, and continue to do it as a phased rehabilitation. You know, there'll be weekend works when we're working on the ramps, which those would have to be closed over the weekend. We've done that in the past. So the idea is to maintain the operation of the facility if we can. The, if there is a, you know, any displacement, we'll probably work with white planes to accommodate those vehicles in the Galleria parking.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this?
This is Rob. I just, you know, we had, in our capital, when we approved the capital plan, we put in a number of suggestions as to sort of updating parking to sort of reach our goal, which is to reduce single occupancy vehicles, as was, as stated in the patterns document from 1996. I guess, you know, I want to, like, what is the mechanism by which we would, can require at least the very, at the very minimum, the transportation demand management plan, you know, for this parking garage? Yeah, I think it's really important. You know, there's a lot of work that's going to be done here. And, you know, as the Germans say, you know, organization should come before electronics, which should come before concrete. So it's important that we sort of figure out how we want this garage to operate to reach our goals. So can we get a TDM plan done before anything, work begins, so we know, like, what our goals are?
Robert, this is Norma Drummond. I'll address some of this. So your comments are included in the, in the capital budget, but the, there is a waiting list for employees who are waiting to get in the garage, and that, my understanding is that waiting list is over 500 employees. So there is definitely a need for this garage, okay? And unfortunately, some of the spaces have been reduced right now because the structure is unsafe to be parking in certain places. Even where I park, you know, I have to be careful that I'm parked far enough in because the calcium, otherwise, will take the paint off my car. So it really, you know, there is definitely a need for employee parking. There are a lot of systems in place to be able to encourage employees to carpool. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of employees that are coming from many places and a lot of different hours, particularly now with COVID going on, where we, even here in our own department, we've got people on multiple different sets of hours, where unfortunately, it makes it carpooling very, very difficult. So I don't, I don't know that we're looking to do a transportation demand management study for an employee garage when we know there's a waiting list of almost 500 names.
If I could just, but what I would respond is that this is, you know, there's an elasticity to demand, you know, that, you know, for example, you know, when I take the bus, I'm not subsidized when I, to go to the, to my meeting at the, you know, at the McCallion Building, whereas I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, parking is free, or it's not free. Okay, so have we looked at sort of increasing pricing, or even, or intelligent, you know, you know, optimization of parking spaces, so people know when the parking spaces are full, things like that? I mean, we only, we only have one chance of this when we're redoing things, especially the electronics. And so why not look at those things now before we start investing money that, you know, and then later on, we find, oh, we should have done X when we didn't do it?
Agreed and understood. But no, employees do pay for parking. And so whether, whether that amount can get increased is a union issue. So it's way beyond county planning board discussion. But, you know, again, your comments are in there, and we can leave it to the Board of Legislators to embark on any discussion they wish related to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Can we go now to the next one, the Mamaroneck?
Yeah, this is Bill again. You can hear me, Richard? Great, thank you. Second project county executive added to the budget is an existing project, but with a change in scope. I don't know if you can see the screen. And it's SLI 04, Mamaroneck, BNR Media and Aeration. It's for $7 million. And it's a, I'm going to hand it over to the EF staff to talk us through this project.
Thanks, Bill. This is CJ Gelardo. I'm the capital program coordinator. So basically, earlier in the year, you approved $10 million for 2021 to do this project to replace the media, little plastic places that float around, and to replace mixers and blowers in these two tanks. But after further review, it was determined that the, it's more appropriate for the blowers to be paid for by the, by the Mamaroneck Sewer District themselves. It's not directly related to the biological nitrogen removal process. So that way, that, I mean, it shouldn't be, the cost shouldn't be borne across all four of the, of the Long Island Sound plants. So we just backed that piece out. That'll be a new project in 2022, funded by the Mamaroneck District to replace the bolt blowers. But we're going to go ahead in 2021 with the media replacement and the, and the mixers. And there's a little bit of work to the walls, or repairs to the walls to make them smoother, so they don't damage the media in the future.
Any questions or comments on this one? If not, we have a, sorry. If not, we have a resolution before us to recommend the 2021 capital budget, two additional projects, the parking garage and the Mamaroneck sewer plant. Can I have a motion?
Daniel Finger, some of.
Thank you, Daniel. Can I have a second?
I'll second it, James.
Thank you, James. Call the roll, please.
James, James Arndt?
Yes.
Robert Barron?
Yes.
Mike Douglas?
Not here.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Imena Franchella?
Yes.
Hugh Grecian? Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Nat Federich, Chief for Vincent Copicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Tombs? And Reenie, Reenie Toback?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Let me try once more. Jane Sung, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Richard, I'm sorry, there's one more item on this, on the agenda.
I know, but I'd like to move them up if possible.
Okay.
I'm not going to ignore it. Jane, we can't hear you. Jane, you have to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have you both on my phone and on the computer, so I'm not sure where you're hearing me.
Okay, let me.
But I apologize for the confusion.
Okay, let Jane.
And thank you for inviting us today.
Jane, let me give a little, hello, Jane, let me give a little introduction to the board.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we invited representatives from Con Ed to come today. If you remember, a few months ago, Con Ed had requested that the county cut down trees on county property under transmission law adjoining the Spraybrook Parkway. And after reviewing it, we, we discussed it, and we recommended that, yes, that the county should give permission. However, we did put one condition in, that the trees adjoining the Spraybrook Parkway should be trimmed and not cut. The others could all be cut, but the ones immediately adjoining the Spraybrook Parkway. But we also ended up having a discussion of the impact of Con Ed tree trimming in local municipalities. And if you can see on your screen now, this is from Con Edison, and this is their approach to tree trimming. And we all felt that what this disfigures trees. Now, we all know, we don't want trees to knock down power lines. We don't, none of us want to go without power. We understand the problems that Con Edison has in dealing with that. But on the other hand, we have these trees that are being disfigured, which also disfigure neighborhoods. Personally, on my block, Con Edison came and cut down, cut down, not trimmed, three large maple trees that were healthy. But in addition, Con Edison left a 10-foot trunk in each of the three locations, which then became the responsibility of the municipality, in this case, Portchester, to cut down the remaining of the trunk and to grind the stump, which is in expense to the village of Portchester after Con Ed took down these trees. So we invited Con Edison to come to see if they could give us their background, and then if there could be a better way of tree trimming to avoid this kind of disfigurement. And with that introduction, Jane, it's up, you're on now.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you giving us the time to come and speak to you. At many, some of you on the phone know me. I'm Jane Solnick, and I'm Director of Regional and Community Affairs for Con Edison here in Westchester. But it's more important that you hear today from our gentlemen that are on the phone, which is I Alton Ramos and Scott Marata, who manage our tree trimming our program. So I'm going to give the mic over to them. Hi, Alton, can you be heard? I can't hear you. Okay, I know that they called it on a separate line, and that's what I did, and that's how you can hear me. Just, I, Alton, I opened up both the mic on the, on the telescreen and also the mic on my phone.
Please try again. I just unmuted.
Yeah, how about now? Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
All right, so we're, we're on the phone here. Is there a possibility to try to share the screen? And I'll, we'll have a presentation deck briefly, and I think will help bridge the introduction that was given. Can we attempt to?
I will mute into mode, Alton, and you can take the screen if you want.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you have the screen if you want to share your screen now.
Okay, and let me just bring the, no?
There you go.
All right, all right. Can everyone, the PowerPoint presentation we have?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Again, good morning, everyone. My name's I Alton Ramos. I'm the section manager of contract managing here at Con Edison, and I oversee our vegetation management program. Also, this morning, I have my colleague here, Scott Marata, who's a planner in the group. And so in terms of Con Edison, our tree trimming, our vegetation management, you know, we are affiliated with International Society of Arbiculture and also Tree Line USA. So we do have a affiliation and partnership, the over focus on tree health in addition to our reliability of our structure. So the agenda for, for this morning, we want to cover a couple of items of discussion, which kind of was entered in the initial introduction. We'll go over our tree trimming cycle, an enhanced hazard retreat program, you know, storm response, and how we gear up, and then also some of the customer visits that we have. So overall, an effective vegetation program is essential to the reliability of the service we provide, and it, and the meat of the program has been bold. We're getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah, some, because everyone put. Yeah, some, because everyone put their unmute for the speaker.
So, yes. Thank you, sir. So every three years, we trim to create these minimum distance to provide clearances around our, between the trees and our conductors. In Westchester County, the specification is 15 feet above, 10 feet to either side, and 10 feet below our power lines, as you can see here by the dimensions, which sometimes could leave the trees to look, appear disfigured to provide that clearance. On a three-year cycle, we trim about 2,200 miles throughout Westchester County to provide us these clearances from the power lines. You know, year-to-date on 2020, we currently have 217 miles to trim along the way. In addition to trimming, while we are in that right-of-way, in that zone of those dimensions given, we also identify trees that have been deemed to be by a harbor, we use contractors, experts that we have to survey these trees, they deem them to be dead, dying, or diseased. We obtained written permissions from the towns of its private property owner to remove these trees that would have adverse impacts to our system. And these are typically doing our cycle trimming, which is made in conjunction by the vendor that we use, Asplent Trees, and also with the Oversight Department, and get the permission from the town, the muni.
Okay, do you have to get permission from the town for every tree you cut down?
Yes, we, every tree that we remove, we would have to get a permission. And as you can see, yes, yeah, year-to-date, you know, on a three-year cycle, about 2,000 trees are being removed, just this year, about 502 trees. So these are ongoing discussions about us having to remove the trees. Because the trees, the jurisdictions do fall to the town. Now, this is something I think you highlighted earlier this morning in what we call topping. So topping requests comes from a variety of avenues. Most typically, it comes from the munis. Now, this is a tree that the town has deemed to be either, that they have, they would like to remove, and they don't have the proper clearance into, from our lowest conductor. And so what we would do, we would bring it about two feet below our power lines, as this picture would show, and then we would leave the remain in there, and the town would follow and do the removal. Because again, the jurisdiction and the ownership of these trees falls with the town. So a lot of these come either for private customer, for a property owner, this one here is shown, and there is a permission that is followed to do this. And these could be trees now that are not on that cycle within that year for us to do the right-of-way removal. If it was scheduled to trim that year, it would have been on the other one, the prior program, which we do the full removal. These are off-cycles, which could be in, breaching our zone, but the homeowner or the town needs to remove the tree, and they don't have a qualified line clearance crew that could go within the distance to our lines, and we need to provide that clearance. Any question on this?
What, you're saying the property owner is requesting that?
Yeah.
Mostly the munis.
Yeah, mostly the munis are looking at it. All of these are coming from requests. We get them from various munis, the requests. So you can see here, on an annual basis, anywhere about 300 and change of these type of requests comes in from the munis. And usually, these are trees that they deem to be dead, dying, and diseased, and may not be on a feeder circuit that was scheduled to trim that year, but the muni wants to remove these streets.
Wait, now, you're talking about the municipality wants to remove it?
Yes, the municipality wants to-
Okay, this is not on private property?
Yeah, that could be not on-
Yeah, so this is, this is Scott Marata. On rare occasions, we do get, you know, a topping request from a customer, but the majority of our topping requests come from towns such as Portchester, White Plains, things like that.
You don't initiate topping requests on your own?
No, we do not. So the toppings come from the munis, and then our responsibility, division of responsibility, is to provide that clearance, so they could use their line clearance, qualified tree trimming crews that have the distance, what we call the minimum approach distance to electric circuits. They can't go within 10 feet by OSHA's regulation. And that's why we would have to top the tree, we would leave behind the stumps there, and the munis will follow up. So it is a request that is initiated from the munis. All right, so the next, next focus on the- The next program that we have here, now, this is a more enhanced into our vegetation echo. Everyone see the hazardous tree program?
Yes.
All right, so, so addition to the cycle trimming program that we have, which is a three-year cycle that we go, you know, around our circuits for 20 to 100 miles, we also now have a program that now focuses on trees that could impact our facilities that's off right-of-way. Be a tree that's maybe in a backyard, or a tree that's across the street, that if it's dead, dying, and diseased, and it falls, you know, during any inclement weather, it would take out the circuit. So you can see on the first picture here to the left, you can see a tree on the right that's overgrowing, going across the street, here you see a transformer and the power lines. And we, once we've surveyed these trees, we deem that that they're dead and dying, we would get permission, again, all trees to be removed needs to get permissions from the muni, and we would remove this. In the middle picture here, we actually use a crane for a lot of these trees due to the height, and you see here, just if you could see it, the crane is actually picking up a portion of the tree that has, she's been cut, bringing it over the power line. And these are, and this program initiated in the aftermath of the storms that we had in the spring of 2018, the Riley Quinn, in the first quarter, so the program initiated in the fourth quarter of 2018 for us to target based on reliability performance and also circuits supplying critical facilities, such as water treatment facilities, hospitals that we have on the, on the circuits, identify these candidates, that we elicited permission either from homeowner or the municipality to remove these streets. Year-to-date, we've removed, it's a program initiated in 2018, about 2,000 trees have been removed, and we look to focus a target about 1,200 trees to 1,500 trees per year. Any question on the hazardous tree program? So, so it's a lot, a lot of communications we do with, with the munis when it comes to any of our tree works, in terms of the removals and the cycle and for the full removal. Now, I'll pass it over to Scott. Scott, we'll go over some of our storm response and some of more of the customer relations work we're doing.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Okay, so in terms of storm response, you can see some pictures there of some, some tree damage. You know, we ensure that we have adequate, adequate crewing levels. For the recent tropical storm, we had to pull in mutual aid to help support, you know, our efforts here due to the customer outages. We also work with the municipalities, and we help them with road closures, any public safety concerns. And in addition to having all these crews out there, we provide field oversight, and we also have our internal ConEd folks help, you know, provide response to those events. Any questions on that? Go to the next one here. Okay, in terms of, so what do we, what kind of outreach do we do? COVID-19 has slowed down our outreach a little bit, so we've had to go to our, in terms of our face-to-face outreach, but we do participate with various municipalities such as Yorktown-Greenberg. At Arbor Day, we hand out about 4,000 seedlings, which you can see in those pictures there. Those are a picture of some of the events to encourage planting the right trees in the right place, and, you know, encourage the, the planting of good tree species, compatible species. We also have a, an education campaign, similar to planting the right tree in the right place. It's called a Tree Maintenance Guide, and it just helps the customers to, you know, select the right trees, also helps them with any pruning tips on how to properly prune a tree or shrub, and that's based on ISA, International Society of Arbiculture Guidelines. And we also have an updated website. A lot of this information is available on our website. Okay, so when we talk about the customer experience, most of the inquiries that we get in terms of, you know, our response to address various inquiries that come in, customer concerns, we do get some that get called into the call center. On our website, we do have a link. If you go to the hazardous tree program, a customer can go on there, and if they have a tree they'd like to get evaluated, that they believe may be a candidate for the hazardous tree program, they'll send us an email, and we'll get that email directly, and we'll investigate it. And so far this year, we've received about 500 requests from, you know, various customers to, for us to evaluate their trees and their tree conditions. Approximately 65% of the customer inquiries that we get involve electric service wire, which the trees are on private property, or telecommunications wire. So you can see a picture of, you know, on the left-hand side of the service wire, and, you know, we do not provide trimming along that service wire to the trees that are on private property. We do perform the trimming along our right-of-way and within our specification, but we do not tree trim along the service wire on, on trees that are on private property. The trees, sorry, the picture on the right-hand side just shows a, an everything pole, just so you can see, you know, where our primary wires are. Usually, on the top of the pole, you can see the secondary wires, there's the house service wires, aerial cable, which is also electric. You can see fire alarm wires, if that's present, cable, TV, telephone, and, you know, a guy wire, and also a firelight wire. So, so we do get a lot of these customer inquiries. You could see there, three-year total, almost 9,500 inquiries that we respond to, we track, we track our response, we reach out to the customer, we go on-site, we speak to the customers, and, you know, this year already, we have 3,261 inquiries that we've investigated. And, you know, we continue to work with the customers and the municipalities, and, you know, we try to educate them as to, you know, what our responsibilities are. And are there any questions on that?
When, when the wire from the house to the pole, which you say you don't do trees on private property, what is the customer supposed to do?
So the customer can hire a licensed tree contractor that is, that has the ability to work within 10 feet of our lines, or they can go on our website and submit a request to Energy Services, and we will de-energize the line for them so they could have a non, a non-approved or non-certified tree crew, you know, clear the vegetation for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you, Scott. So that's all we have. I hope, you know, it gave you some information. So one of the takeaways we wanted to leave the board is, you know, a lot of communication does take place with the individual municipality that we have. You know, we have, in Westchester, we have four chief construction inspectors that have a working relationship with the munis, that do the planning for the job, seeing if it's a topping or a removal or hazardous tree, that we communicate that. And also doing storm events, we do have the muni days on that we work through here, that we kind of prepare, and we also tag along tree crew as part of our cut-clear, make-safe initial storm response.
Can we just go back? I don't know if you can get the first slide back, the tree trimming, which, can you come up with a better solution than disfiguring the trees on local blocks?
The, this is our specification, and the reason why our specification is this way is, is to, we trim on three-year cycle to allow for, you know, tree growth within that time period, you know, so that distance is in accordance to our specification. And, I mean, it's, you know, the only way to eliminate this would be to put all these wires underground, which is, and, you know, a very exorbitant amount of money. So I'm really, you know, I really don't know of any other way.
Well, if you trimmed every year instead of every three years, you probably could keep on top of it without having to cut into the tree as much. To me, that would be one way.
We do have, like I said, we have a robust tree program, just, I should have said this at the beginning. We spent, allocate about $14 million annually on trimming, on our tree trimming program. Obviously, it's a reliability index for us, as obviously we want to have the proper clearance. As Scott was saying, the specifications to provide that clearance does have a deform effect on the trees, and also looking at the tree growth. We try to work with the vendors and, and to make sure that, you know, we're staying within the specs and oversight. So the dimensions that were given, as you can see here, does kind of lead those trees to form. So I do understand the concern.
Okay, so you understand the problem, but I haven't heard a solution, and all we do is have these disfigured trees on local blocks.
No, I understand it. Like I said, the concern, obviously, just you could decipher this on the picture, is the solution is, you know, obviously with the infrastructures, the way they are within those right-of-way, as the trees are approaching, as Scott said, one of the things we look into, like the, the focus to underground, the overhead circuit, that comes across at $8 million a mile. A lot of studies have been done and presented, you know, to different municipalities, focus on that, and that is something, and, and those are things that passes on to the rate pairs. So, you know, like I said, we take part of this, and it's a concern across the industry that, that the disformation of the trees based on the clearance.
And the, and the clearances also provide, you know, adequate, you know, line clearance in terms of, you know, if we, if we trim at a smaller, you know, distance, I mean, unless you're trimming two inches, three inches, which is not safe because of, you can get during rainy day events, you can get electric, you could get tracking. So, you know, I mean, we also, the top of the tree, you know, we also want to try to prevent, you know, limbs falling, so if we're only going up, say, two feet, those limbs are two feet away, and when we get, when we get snow and ice, they're right there, and there's literally no tolerance for the, for any sort of sagging, which can cause public safety concerns, outages, you know. So this is the specification, this is what's been approved, and we believe it's, you know, it's, you know, what we have right now.
Well, approved by Con Edison. Again, I hear, I understand your issues. I, we certainly don't want to have power outages. But you haven't given me any, any ideas even as to how you could have a trimming program that is less intrusive and disfiguring of trees in local blocks.
So if I can just jump in here for a second, because I do know that you have a time schedule. We do, I want to point out that we do do it, that we do it for the health of the tree. We do, I want to point out that we do do it, that we do it for the health of the tree as well. And the reason for our large communication program about the right tree in the right place is because we want to try to avoid cutting people's trees. So, if they plant trees that are shorter, it's much better for all of us involved. But we have the trees there now, that's why we're all in Westchester County, because we love our beautiful trees. But there is a balance, and I do, we do understand your concerns and the awkward look of the tree. But it comes to a balance, and I do want you to be aware that we are doing it with the health of the tree in mind as well. And I also wanted to add on this call, because I know there's a lot of you on the call, if there's any questions that come up afterwards, Norma has my contact information, so please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Okay, just lastly, I'm going to be driving up the Sprain Parkway later today. Am I going to be seeing trees cut down all the way to the parkway under the transmission lines?
So, the transmission, the major transmission lines have a different program for trimming. And I'm happy to connect you with those people, but there is a requirement that we have to keep a very good clearance at the transmission lines. Remember, going back several years ago, we had a problem that the whole East Coast was out of service because of things that had happened in, I think it was Ohio or something, and it kind of came all the way through. So, there is different requirements for the transmission lines, and I'm happy to share that with you.
Approved cutting under the transmission line up until the last piece next to the Sprain Parkway, so that we, so on the sprain, you wouldn't be looking into an, you know, an open strip. You know if that was, if our, if our recommendation was accepted?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry. But I'll follow up with that.
If you could find out, get back to us, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, I want to thank, thank all the ConEd staff for having taken the time on this tough Wednesday morning to, early, to come to our Planning Board meeting. We finally worked out the kinks in the, in our technology. And again, I want to thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We have one more item to, we can do quickly, Stormwater Management Program at the county airport.
Hi, good morning. Again, this is, unlike the previous projects you saw before, this is actually an amendment of the current 2020 capital projects that have already been approved. What you saw before were additions to what's proposed for next year. This is a change in the 2020 capital program. The project is, sorry about that, the project is AO 42C Stormwater Management at the county airport. Again, it's a capital budget amendment in 2020 for $3.75 million. And Commissioner Grecian's on the line, and he's going to talk us through.
Yeah, yeah, good morning, everyone. This is for a design of a stormwater system at, at the end, northern end of the Westchester County Airport. It butts the, butts New York City water supply. We have currently under consent order from the New York DEC. We've been working with them over the last year on an interim remedial measure plan for groundwater. What we found during dry flow, it's, it's got a very small catchment area, in other words, not too many, not too many acres go into the lake from there. Most of the drainage flows south. We, during the dry flow, we've, we've noticed some, so, dry weather flow, which means it's groundwater. So, we want to prevent groundwater from entering the reservoir. There are, it has been tested for PFOA, PFOS, and that, that was used in the firefighting foam by the National Guard, Army National Guard years ago. And we've had detected small amounts of that in the groundwater out there. So, what we've, this is an interim plan to capture the groundwater, to prevent the groundwater from actually going in. What we're, we sculpt the existing system, it was full of, it's very deteriorated, the manholes are very deteriorated. We're replacing all the pipes with sealed pipes, they're basically have no joints, you actually fuse them in place. All the manholes are being replaced, and that will, that will prevent the groundwater from going through the system. What you see on your, on your screen is the network. I know it's very small, but that just, that's, it's hard to show that, but right close to that is the, is New York City watershed. And again, what this will prevent is groundwater going in, getting collected within a deteriorated stormwater system, and that flow would, would no longer go into the, the New York City reservoir system. We're very anxious to get this project going. We are under consent order, and that's why we're back to you today. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? If not, there's a resolution on the agenda to include in the 2020 capital project request for the stormwater management at the county airport, and I have a motion.
This is Holly, I'll move.
Thank you, Holly. Can I have a second?
Daniel Finger, I'll second.
Thank you, Daniel. Call the roll, please.
James Art? Actually, James, I think, left the meeting. Robert Barron?
Yes.
Dwight's still not here. Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Amanda Franchella?
Yes.
Commissioner Grecian?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes?
Yes.
And Rini Tobek?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If I, I know it's been a long meeting, if I could take two minutes, I want to talk about the Chappaqua Form-Based Code, Hamlet Form-Based Code. There was an article in the Journal News last week, "The Local Residents of Chappaqua Are Up in Arms Against This Form-Based Code." They hate it. They say, "It's going to permit five-story buildings in our downtown, in our coolic and quaint downtown. That shouldn't be allowed." They started a campaign, petition campaign, and they got over 1,000 signatures to oppose the Form-Based Code. Well, as if that wasn't enough, one of the leaders of the opposition is, is running, ran yesterday, a write-in campaign for the town board of the town of Newcastle in order to get on the board to oppose the Form-Based Code. So, I suppose their public hearing on this is going to be pretty interesting. Anyway, does anyone else have any other business? Thank you all for putting up, it was a little bit longer than I had hoped, but everyone stay safe. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Have a second. All in favor? Okay, we're adjourning. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.